Recording is progress.
We do have anything. So.
Okay.
As long as we have four presidents.
You are a single one.
Okay.
Well, I've been arrested too.
Yeah.
A couple months. Should we do the pledge?
Do the pledge, all agents?
To the Father, United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, a limited God, indivisible, where we're beginning to draw.
My kids' masters and us of addition for that. It was such a lot. Again, um, being in the planning commission meeting, the city of Sullivan, Tuesday, March twenty first at seven P M. Uh, we have any media online. I'm there. Hey, uh, everyone, Brad, did you manage the two this year? Yes. The motion to approve them. For the motion. I second the motion to approve.
Commissioner Moore. Uh huh. Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Witt.
Hi.
In sharing.
Hi. Okay, um. Then we have the workshop updates.
So, um. What is, um, kind of a tale is we kind of watched the House of Senate bills, any of those that might have, which say about these that we need to watch for. Uh, we have those ones, House Bill two thousand one, two thousand three. There's a couple others, um, that we kind of keep an eye on. They don't really hit until we get the population to ten thousand. Right now, we're eight thousand nine hundred fifty six. Um, we're not projected to be to ten thousand, but if we continue to grow, it's a way we are. We could have sooner than right now. Um, but obviously housing needs are there. Um, there's a shortage. Houses continue to be built. We have, you know, contractors are becoming further and fewer between the some retiree and whatnot, but we have, um, a few that have had one or half and just continue to expand with those developments that you've seen before you. Um. Some of the things that we have been looking at, um, and council has expressed interest in looking at is are what can we do, what options do we have to help the housing needs? Um, so in trying to address some of those, there's options that we can amend our development code. I actually, I scheduled a meeting for Jake and I to talk to our regional representative with Department of Land Conservation and Development, and that's tomorrow morning. The first time I've squeezed in a call before the meeting. Um, then there could be grant possibilities for us to discuss the housing needs analysis. I think housing capacity analysis is what they now call it. Um, to see what some of those options or what the need really is for us. You know, do we have the need for the multi housing? Do we have a single family, um, low income? What are we looking at? The other things is with our homeless camp, um, the city managers like exploring the different opportunities of the tiny homes are, um, different. We have shared the examples. I don't know if any of you are familiar with cottage growth, but they have those little cluster houses or cluster cottages. Looks like a clean top little, uh, area of it. Those could be an option that is they replacing our marginalized area RV or open. We have though a couple of those that are pretty run down or need help in our urban people districts. So having that funding to work with a developer to kind of make those improvements, um, could take place. So we want to kind of get your guys' thoughts, brainstorm ideas. We'll continue to have workshops, learn more about what. Um, one of my questions to the Department of Land Conservation was, um, do we need to start with the housing capacity analysis? Do we need to start with available land inventory? Do we start with the comprehensive plan update? Because our comprehensive plan is the house that keeps all these policies underneath of it. And so if we have a, the policies that lead into an updated comprehensive plan, that would be great. Typically, those plans are good for twenty years and ours is dated nineteen.
Just answer the question. Answer the question, yes or no?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so are they, are they planning to tie grant monies to having to do, uh, homeless, uh, housing?
That is outside of the bone. Um, what we're looking at, so generally our city manager has a committee that works on the homeless situation. Um, could it roll into something that would work with that? Absolutely. Um, but I don't know the funding side of that specifically. Were our, our development code to work towards the mechanism of helping the need for houses?
Right, so that would be my, that would be my, I guess my point with that is, um, what's the priority? Is it giving homes for homeless or homes for people that can need one, that can buy one? And support the community because that would mean homeless, homeless housing is not a, depending on everything for the community at all.
I would think it rolls back to the definition of affordable, which is different to many, um.
I mean, I'd have to look at, they have to look at the language in that. I mean.
Absolutely.
If they're trying to do their cities, big cities, which become the basically then for people who use drugs. One second maybe to the community brings things that we don't want, typically.
Right, and so I would steer us a little bit away from that. But that group that's handling that, facilitate when work towards that. I would like to see our focus more on the types of houses, so.
So a balance of like, um, um, what was section eight, because it sounds bad, because it's what we used to call it. A balance between like some of this, like some of the areas that I've lived in, cities like you have to have a percentage of, uh, subsidized affordable homes.
Who's right.
And then X amount of now people where they can, you know, buy.
And they do require some of those development code changes as you get to more to the twenty five thousand population. So I don't think we're quite there, but we're close to the one used, just using one of the main examples is our single family, our low density residential as a single family. You can have a duplex on an interior lot, but not a corner lots or as I bet, swap that. You can have a duplex on a corner lot, not an interior lot. So if what this, um, hospital does is requires you to update your development code that then allows you on all your residential lots to have a duplex. So if you live in a subdivision that has all single family homes, somebody could come in and build a duplex right next to you. Now, the CCNRs, keep that in mind, is totally outside of that as well because a homeowners association can regulate the CCNRs that we don't regulate or develop the code.
Well, I haven't taken, I mean, I've given a bribe, uh, but what's, what's the, is it acreage? That the encampment is right now before they place ones? Is acre, a couple acres?
What do you mean?
Where the encampment is? I don't know what street that's off of, I don't know.
Oh, Taylor Hastings, the Hastings Village, I think is what they recurraged it was, so. Um, so that was, if we wanted that off of, I'm going to use San Antonio because that was what the public guys saw. Um, they could be, they could locate themselves in the public right of way. So that gave.
As hard as it is to.
Um, well, we had originally going on a piece of law until we worked in agreeing. I don't know the land size and we don't know, um.
So it's.
It's not, I don't give it the evidence because it's not a structure, so I don't, you know.
It was a little hands off. It's intentional, what you're only.
Uh huh. Again, that's getting more into the rules and regulations that we got thrown out the window as far as legislatively versus what we have to deal with today. So steering clear of that, so steering clear of that, I'm going to take you down another road of what the council had directed staff to kind of look into, and that was RVs. So we currently do not allow RVs in the city limits. Um, it does not meet the definition of a single family dwelling. It doesn't meet the square footage. It does not meet the placement of a manufactured home, so on and so forth. So there's all of the doors that are not met per our development code that do not allow an RV.
You just park on a lot?
Yeah. On a lot, or if you want.
See all kinds of parking on a lot, reasonable. But it's not the old idea.
It.
It's a lot of it.
Um, is not.
Right.
So.
As a resident.
I'll give, well, I'll give a little bit more history on it, um. There, so we've been complaining for them, um, in the past. And so if somebody was to complain, then we would respond. Send the lawyer, our compliance officer, send out the letter, go through the, to, and. Um, obviously, there are several that have not been complained about recently since now we're getting the fires, um, tough times that are happening. Um, we've, um, I guess we've taken a step back to kind of evaluate what, you know, give the people an opportunity because they lost their home to a fire or, you know, so on and so forth. There's various reasons, we don't know them all. Um, but then what is somebody might think, oh, well, my neighbors, that's someone living next to me. It's fine, it doesn't bother me. Well, someone else could have a pile of trash, you know, building up outside and causing the rats to come into their house. And there's several scenarios. What we did as part of our research project is, um, Jake is excited kind of going out to all these other entities and how they were going to, um, how they reacted to it. How are they handling it? Is it permitted? And we actually had a staff report and we think that we had a mine studies that she researched and they, yeah, mine jurisdictions were contacted. The same team that was standing with the corporate ones who raised for cash, so it changed grid fill and bend. Um, and then she had listed several of what they require, a majority of them are human. Some of them, um, so like others can allow like days of calendar year. And but again, it's kind of regulating, separate them. So you wouldn't be able to prove that somebody was residing in more than a year. Or they have a covenant that would allow them releasing, they can't have any liability if somebody was to, you know, like the RV, one of them plating or whatever, because they don't need building codes. Yeah, so then they, there's, there's a covenant that we lease those liabilities. Um, so then it's going to be a workshop and we'll have more details kind of sent to you in an information packet. Um, what your guys' brainstorming workshop, um, thoughts.
Little side of stuff just to figure out what we want to put in place.
Yeah, and kind of what your recommendation the council will be. Um, and so we're going to, I just wanted to kind of bring some of this forward as we look, um, because, so we're having a workshop with the city council on what their goals and priorities are, uh, over the next two years. So with that, you know, is there anything that you guys see within the realm that you would suggest?
Is.
Beyond that list?
Now that you talked about the, the, the land code and the charter, is that the same thing or is the charter different?
So there's the municipal code, which the, that kind of development code is actually part of the municipal code, but because it's such a big, um, book and it's specific to land use, it's out on its own, but it's a piece of that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I just, I had that suggestion, maybe I'm wondering why too. Um, this affects me personally, I had a piece of property I wanted to build on.
Uh huh.
But in order to do it, I had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to bring super sewer to that property.
Hmm.
Why can't I have a seventy tank?
So.
I know it's in the charter, so it can't be a variance, but.
And so what that is, that actually for sewer is, um, legislated being mandated. So if you're within three hundred feet of a sewer maze, hey, say your house is going here, but this part of your property is what's three hundred feet. It applies to the whole property boundary. If it's within three hundred feet of a sewer maze, you're required to come to that sewer. And that's, I mean, it's a little municipal code, but it's from state legislature.
You're afraid of reaching all that stuff, which is unreal.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it must say wrong. If it's on count and property, one thing to say, oh, it's a driveway in, off a city. I had to amend the city requirements.
So if you're, if your property.
Civil engineer looked into it.
Yeah. If your property is outside the city, like your house, so like my house is outside the city, but my yard is inside the city. I have this, I'm going literally for my property. My house cannot be on the city sewer because it's not inside, but my neighbor who is inside, then you have, he has to go down my driveway to get to his house. He's on city sewer.
Yeah, since on South Side Road, my mom lives there. Her city county line was right in the middle of her house, but it's just, you know.
That's why.
So, so what, um.
I did.
So, well, how do we get in with, um, with this whole thing we're talking about? So what's the, what's the process, pursuit?
So, um, unless just off the top of your, um, mind, if you have something that, you know, you kind of would like us to look into and pursue, we recommend to the council at their workshop this week, um, we're happy to take those recommendations. Otherwise, what we want to do is kind of have you thinking about, um, the housing, it's the RVs, what your thoughts are about. So currently, um, you cannot connect an RV to the city services. Yeah, you can't dump your RV, I should say, into like the city sewer. And so there are a lot of those pieces to connect.
So we're technically tied, so we've tightened up ordinances.
Or loosen the, um.
Or loosen the, right, it's dependent on, on what we're talking about.
And maybe saying you want to leave the RVs alone, but you want to look at, um, allowing smaller dwellings sizes or smaller parcel sizes or something that would allow more, you know, or we could change, look at the duplex opportunities or, um, just taking some of those parameters of what it would take to build our site today. And how can we come?
Five, your ten year, fifteen year forecast as to what you want to see the city is going to grow.
Uh huh.
Um, what that growth is going to look like and where we, where it best fits. Right, so we're just not slapping stuff here and there.
I mean, and another interesting, so a lot of our available land is also in the hillside. So we have this residential hillside zoning that hasn't three, one, very cheaper. Um, so is that something, you know, do you want to look at reducing those sizes? But of course, the geo check report still would be required. Sometimes the slopes require the bigger parcel sizes because of the geo check and the stability of the soils. I mean, but as you guys are driving around or seeing some of that, knowing where our boundaries are, um.
So how would I grab my plan would be to, to help incentivize developers or folk of the zone?
No, that's actually to help facilitate what our housing needs are.
Uh huh.
Uh, and depending which avenue, because I kind of asked a whole bunch of questions.
Uh.
Um, which document do we need to update first? I would assume it's going to be that housing capacity analysis.
Okay.
So we know what our housing shortage is.
It also costs the city going to the process.
To do that, it's about a fifty to sixty thousand bucks. So it would help pay for some of that and we would have our percentage of match. Yeah, these master plans, it's.
I'm still, I'm still baffled to the idea that they'll, they'll throw a bunch of money to build homes for homeless people, but would incentivize the cities to make it easier for the developers to build. So those is, you know, legitimately work and need homes and.
So then, as you say that, what would be your thoughts to do that? Um, well, is there anything in our development code that would help, um, facilitate some of?
Well, I think you just kind of touched on it, I think probably making, uh, I wouldn't say easier, but more efficient to get utilities to, to areas, um, you know.
So keeping funding in the back of your minds.
Right.
Because the money's, it's got to be built somewhere, somehow.
Right.
So where, how do we come up with that?
Prioritize, like you do, you know, roads and stuff, prioritize areas and say, hey, we're going to incentivize for this area, not incentivize, but you know, focus on this area, make it, uh, so that it's, um, more affordable to get into the, to get into the building process, because that's a huge upfront cost.
Sure.
So.
But wouldn't the housing analysis need to come first before anything? Before you start looking at what your actual needs are? Because if you did the housing, I mean, we can throw out ideas, but the housing analysis is really going to tell, kind of inform everybody of, you know, there's some possible options. So you're saying the last one was nineteen ninety?
So the, there's the comprehensive plan, which then sets what the zonings and the land use, housing needs, um, the natural resources, it sets all of those statewide planning goals. And so towards the city of Sullivan, so with that, the housing goal ten is one of them. So if I think, have you been part of one of the plan amendment zone changes where we get, um, there's a certain group and that responds and always responds to goal ten stating that the need for housing is there.
Right.
And so, uh, making sure we're not taking away anyone's housing. So if somebody went from a commercial zone to a residential zone or vice versa, both of those in our buildable lands, which is also outdated, um, from two thousand five, but both of those would set that parameter of which one do you need more? Which one's the bigger shortage? And since it currently reflects that there's a shortage of both, usually they don't say a lot, but that group's going to respond and say they shouldn't take away any opportunities for house. So. So yes, to your question, I agree. Um, hopefully, we learn a lot on this call tomorrow about this opportunity, um, to move forward with this analysis to see what our shortage actually is. I mean, there's all this.
Yeah, I think we were, not even the ever so, but just.
Yeah.
Saying, hey, kind of get ready for what happened, what would happen next.
And did, so how do they, when they look at the projections of population? I know you were saying that ten thousand.
Uh huh.
So how far out could they expect if they're, they have so many years when you look at that population? Before you might hit that? I mean, I know you were saying ten, fifteen years out, we guys look at.
Um, San Antonio Portland State University actually puts it out and I can include that in one of your guys' packets on the projections as we work on this. I want to say it was, let's see, we're twenty twenty three, I want to say it was twenty thirty five-ish that they projected us to be that and I just didn't believe it because of how quickly we've grown recently.
Right.
Um, yes, I expect we would slow down, but at the same time, there's probably a bigger housing shortage in the bigger cities and that's why a lot of them are filtered into the smaller cities. So, um.
Well, well, that, some of the statistics I was looking up, the, um, crime statistics and stuff like that, that was counting on the, the most side of all of that. Some people are coming, I feel safe.
Um, true.
So.
And a lot of them.
So accommodate.
There's a lot of them, you know, you have them coming around the fires, like the Paradise Fire. And so then they look at the different, you know, you could go up at the golf course and they felt almost like they were bottlenecked in, in the same situation because there was only one ingress, egress. So us looking towards that secondary university grass. It was.
Down here, where, where, where would we allow that higher density, like a half mile off the freeway? Pretty sure, you know, that less central, uh, heavy east is, is going to get hammered. There's a bunch of them on that.
Well, and also building out the infrastructure to, we be a, so central is our major arterial.
Right.
Um, one of our goals of the transportation system plan is to mitigate some of that traffic off of the main arterial onto some of the side streets. So like Ford is one of our major collectors, um, you know, we have South California. So you look at the nature of a lot of the streets as we went through the transportation system plan and creating some of that congestion for these specific developments.
That's, I'm, uh, tell me, it's a necessary.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we'll start getting probably busy. It's kind of, we did the housing code audit for you were, you, how long have you been on there?
Uh, about over a year.
Okay, so we did a housing, um, code audit in two thousand, I'm going to say nineteen, yeah, two thousand nineteen. And so we actually worked, it was one of these saving planning grants through the Department of Land Conservation. And so some of their suggested changes were just that, I mean, reducing the minimum lot size and increasing the number of dwellings per acre and, um, a lot of the debris is, you know, looking at your access and circulation. A lot of them, they just, they want you to kind of take down the parking environment so you don't have to have as much. And I, we're not there because we still, even though we've grown significantly, we're still at metro community and transportation does not exist like it does in the big cities. So, um, there's just a lot of those different scenarios for dwelling units and whatnot that, um, this covered. And we made a lot of those changes in our last code updates. And so we can just, you know, then reevaluate what changes we made and make them better, stronger, whichever. But then infrastructure also could come into play to know what the needs are and where the needs are. So.
Yeah, that, that last.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so I mean, if that money, if the money comes down the pipe and goes towards helping, you know, uh, make that infrastructure more robust or extend it out closer to these areas that are buildable. I mean, that would probably be good, a good use of those monies.
Yeah.
Cause every wood is.
It sure does. While at the, um, we encourage like a reimbursement to starts as well, so when a developer does, but when they have to cross other properties, they get reimbursed based on those other developments. So we encourage setting those up as well, so that way they can get some of their money back. Um, yeah, so I don't, unless you guys have any suggestions.
Afternoon.
It's Thursday, so you can talk to Jimmy for the next day.
Okay. Okay, next thing, the, the activity and report. You want to hold on? It's interesting.
I guess what's interesting to you guys, uh, our two major targets of your own correspond and will be found for a water treatment plant. Um, so the water treatment plant will be finished early summer here, um, and then correspond by October-ish, so late fall. And then, of course, when we're getting forward on the downtown parking lot, um, which is behind the backside. So that, it, it'll be completed by the end of this month. Um, direct power back here, so we kind of took a step back from the master planning opportunities. Now, in fact, we'll also take funds when we want to get more public input, um, before we figure out what direction of a master plan we want to go and reconstruct the ingress and egress. And so that is nearing completion for the engineering. And hopefully, we'll get it, um, constructed soon, as by the end of the fiscal year. So that will allow more parking, um, easier access and separating the pedestrians and the traffic on right next to the fire station.
Yeah.
Um, so more people during all the summer events can park back here on the grass.
So is there signage for the downtown parking lot? I mean, I know, we've talked about it before, but just, um, on our term, um, we're policing, but just making sure it's being viewed properly. Um, because it just, you know, because there's, um, um, residential, commercial, real usage.
Uh huh.
You know, you see that people, you know, parking two, three, four, five of their vehicles potentially.
Um, yeah, so a lot of, so it's just the two lots that we have that are, um, behind the little plaza park in our backside. Um, it's kind of even super, yeah, Soul is All In.
Right.
And so the other one there is right across from like the bank building adjacent to Soul is All In. That is private ownership and then like that, you know, the bottom shop, that's private ownership as well. So if it's on the city land, then the cops will enforce the municipal code parking regulations, um, that best they can, as I think you can, you know.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure it's going to get some of the, you know, ones that you see parked around town for three days in the main, so whatnot, but.
Yep.
So then, unless you guys have questions?
Do you have ideas to how the, how the parking spots, that's going to sort of be?
Hmm. I want to say it's going to be like twenty twenty four, if I remember right. I want to say one of them was like twelve. So.
Okay, um. What were the comments? You mean, commissioner comments? Buddy?
Not, not a.
Okay. My mission. Seven thirty two. So just to get, just to.